Good evening. We'd like to call to call the school committee meeting for December 10th to order. We just wanted to announce that this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So just getting into the agenda, our first order of business is open public comment. And I did just check and I do see none. Don't see anyone in the gallery. Second is approval of minutes. We have a set of regular meeting minutes from October 15th. In our packet, we also have some subcommittee minutes in here.
October 15th first?
Excuse me?
October 15th first?
Yes, October 15th first.
Okay.
Regular meeting.
Entertaining a motion?
Please.
I move that we accept the October 15th, 2024, regular school committee meeting minutes as presented. Second.
Who would like to second?
Everybody.
I'll second.
Michelle seconds. Any further discussion, questions, comments?
I don't.
Okay, all in favor of accepting those minutes as presented? And that would be five zero zero. Thank you very much. Next is the August 28th policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept the August 28th, 2024, policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Awesome.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of accepting those minutes as presented? And that would be five, five zero zero. Okay, third would be the September 11th, 2024, subcommittee meeting. Anyone like to make a motion to accept these?
I make a motion to accept the September 11th, 2024, policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion, questions, comments?
No.
All right, all in favor? And that would be another five zero zero. Thank you very much. And I believe lastly, the September 25th, 2024, policy subcommittee minutes.
I make a motion to accept the September 25th, 2024, policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
Agreed. Any further discussion, questions, comments? No?
My only comment is, um, thank you, Jamie, for the help in compiling it. I appreciate it.
Thank you and me for all this work. I just, I read these in my packet. I just don't want to say it in an open meeting. You guys have done a ton of work. It is truly appreciated. Thank you so much. I know we're going to get into it and talk about it a little later, but just a quick thank you. All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Great, five zero zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the policies up. On that note, we're going to move on to the policy subcommittee update. That would be Brent and Rob.
No.
Sorry, Brent and me.
I'll start and then Nathan will correct me. The folks who follow the meetings, I don't know why you wouldn't, they're riveting, but we sought out to do a thorough review of the policy manual. The last time we can discern that that was done was 2008. And sensitive, they are the policies that govern everything in the district, but they're also kind of the purview of the school committee. So we need to be doing our due diligence and reviewing them regularly. So we were proposed that that be done on a semi-regular basis by the committee, and so we're just trying to undertake that. So because we believe the last time it was done was 2008, we're looking at all of them. And there's 284 of them. And so our first meeting, which we did not have minutes for, we'll get those to the committee next, one of the next meetings. Our first meeting, which was in July, was basically a visioning kind of meeting, like how would we want to do this, processes, and just making sure we're following open meeting law while we do this. Not that anyone genuinely generally wants to come, but they're all open meetings. And so what Mr. Irwin and I do is we decide in advance a section of policies we want to look at, and then we do our homework. Basically, we read them, we look for cross-references, we look at other policies, and then we come to the open meeting, ready to discuss that with our notes. We don't share our notes with each other prior to the meeting. And then we discuss that in the meeting and decide if we're going to, if everything looks good and it matches our current understanding of things, other districts, MASC, and the references are up to date, we reaffirm the policy. And that means we can move on. Anyone on the committee can reopen that if they want. It's your right. And then if there's, if there's some that we decide, hey, we've got some more research to do on this, we'll just assign each other homework and list what that is transparently. And then if there's policies that would be, we can look at, but would be best reviewed by a specialist in administration, we pass that through Dr. Berdus, and then she will, she obviously, she looks at everything, but then we'll kind of assign it to the relative, or sorry, relevant department head, whether that's IT, facilities, finance, accommodation there, and curriculum and instruction, and things like that. And yeah, so Nathan, if there's anything else I missed, please pick up on it. And then I think you've got kind of the summary numbers up to this point, too.
So I would just add that we kind of review the legal and statutory references. We want to make sure they align with MASC so that we go hand in hand with them. They've been a huge help. They have everything on their website, very easy. And if they don't align, or if our apology, if our policies don't look the same, we kind of try and find a similar closed policy, and we'll just kind of add it to the homework category of long list of things we still have to do before this process anywhere near the end. And then for the number side of it, as of our last meeting, which was November 20th, me and Brent have kind of, well, we've reviewed more than 106 policies, but we've voted on 106 policies, and out of those, 80% of them, so 85, we've just reaffirmed, we don't think there's any changes or anything like that. 21, we added to our more research. We have like specific homework we need to do for those. We have 17 policies that at our next meeting we have to review because we got notes from Karen. Thank you for those. We have 68 policies that we've kind of sent out to various departments so that they can get back to us with their feedback, and we can work with them collaboratively to make sure that we're all in agreement. And so that basically means 191 out of our 284 policies have been reviewed or sent out to be reviewed by departments. So that only leaves 89 policies. So we still have a lot of work, but significantly better than when we started in June.
I'd say so. And then what's next? And we take questions from the committee or administration, too. Sorry, Mike. What's next is as and when departments are ready to send back notes, whether it's, it looks great, or we really need to look at this, or we need to abolish this policy, or whatever it happens to be, then we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. And our target is March, I believe, that we want to be done with this. And if it turns out to be too aggressive, then we're just leaving a trail of breadcrumbs for the next folks who are on policy subcommittee, if it's not us, to kind of follow and pick up on that.
Awesome.
Yeah, please, question.
I did have a question. So when it went and if there are policies we have to rescind, that's something that we can vote on without doing a reading. But these numbers are, these numbers are vast that you're reviewing, and they're vast as far as how many policies are out. So just as like a housekeeping item question.
Please.
It looks like if we're going to have to review or change or amend policies, we'll have to do a first reading. We can never waive a first reading of a policy, correct?
No.
So we're, I mean, it's just, I'm just thinking, again, just a housekeeping, maybe we should consider down the pike doing some, like, maybe starting in on these, since we're talking about, anything you, you know, we need to make changes or we need to amend, maybe we should start sprinkling, sprinkling them into these meetings so we can start the first read on these policies. Does that make sense?
It does.
Do you understand what I'm going with this?
No, it does. And this is, no, this is, and that's great. And this is where we would have to discuss, to discuss that. So I thank you for bringing it up. What we can do is, there's a handful, on the order of four now, that will need some more substantial updates. And then there's a smaller subset of that 21 with homework, closer to, I think, eight, that it's simply just housekeeping changes. And when it comes to those, those are pretty easy to get out of the way.
Yeah.
Because they generally, generally don't cause much discussion amongst the committee or much controversy. And so we could probably knock those out. Whatever you think, Madam Chair, in terms of a meeting that's coming up, that you might just say, hey, can you give me a handful? Let's take four, or whatever. And then, then that's your purview, if you want to put them on the.
I don't know how anyone else is feeling, but I feel like with all this work you're doing, I have, I have no problem with giving you a spot on every agenda going forward from here to March. If you feel like there are some, some that we can start the readings and just get, get going on these.
That's fine.
Where it's like housekeeping things, because then it'll be one, so it's the read, just for everybody's, and for reminder, so it's the read, then the following meeting is the vote. So we, if we start in on, on doing the read and the discussion, I feel like it could create, like it just, yeah.
There are two readings.
There are two, but you can waive the second.
You can.
You can vote to waive the second.
Right.
Right, but it's two meetings. Is that Mr. Camfield?
Yes.
Correct? So you can do the second reading and we are permitted, right? And I'm just checking.
In the second meeting, you can vote.
We can also vote at, at the time of the second reading.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Whatever, I'll leave it to, whatever it is, my point is, we should probably start putting your work on the agenda with some regular, some regularity, if you are prepared. I don't want to pressure you guys.
No, some of them are honestly, the ones that are just housekeeping, changing this reference, this statute, updating the language.
One of the ones I was specifically looking at was the, the smoking on school premises. Was that ever updated to vaping, to include vaping?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Correct. That was one of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Absolutely.
So like, that one just stood out to me real, real quick, that I wanted to like.
No, no, exactly. And then, and like, that, that's an example of something that's, we believe, but the committees, you guys are the ultimate arbiter of that, all of us together, is, seems that it's not too controversial, or controversial, that would engender much disagreement, I guess.
Did anyone else have any thoughts or input on, on that? Or any problem with us putting a consistent policy spot on the agenda for policy if you guys are ready?
Sure. I'm fine with it. If you're okay with it, Nathan.
I think it's a good idea. That way we don't have to have a very long meeting down the road.
I mean.
With just readings.
We'd be here for days, honestly, if we had 85 policies.
That'd be okay with you.
My head's exploding a little right now. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Any other quick, I mean, this was an information update, but any other comments, questions, updates?
No. And honestly, this is for anybody in admin committee, and frankly, the public, too, since they are open meetings. If you got questions, come on by.
Yeah.
Or just ask us, and we'll try, you know, we're trying to be very transparent with it, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're available.
Because the last thing you want is something that's unfortunate, or not useful, or worst case scenario, harmful, that's in our policy manuals that we're actually kind of bound by.
My last question, is there anything that you found that can be rescinded?
That, the.
It's a tougher question, I know.
And Nathan, I'll just, I'm only speaking for me, right? So throw your thoughts on this. The question comes up, if there's a policy that you read and you're like, is this really necessary? Right? Because there's usually laws like that, there's policies like that. The question we've asked ourselves is, is there a compelling reason to get rid of it? Is it harmful? Or is it just there? Is there a situation which we could imagine, different time, different humans, in different positions, that it might be necessary?
Like if there was a policy on like phone booths or something, like you could get rid of it.
Yeah, exactly. Right, exactly. All the policies on horse and carriages we've, we've sunset, so that's good.
Yeah, just, you know.
But no, to your point.
Nothing that stands out and jumps off the page?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Okay. Just, I was just curious.
No, it's good.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you guys have anything else to add? Anyone?
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. I really appreciate all your work. This is a lot of work. Truly appreciate it. Thank you. All right, can move on to the superintendent's update. Dr. Berdus?
Sure, just some congratulations out. I mean, our football team had a wonderful season. Friday night was not the outcome. We were outscored on Friday, but just to be able to go back to the Super Bowl, and again, thank you to the Kraft Organization for providing two tickets for our high school students. The generosity there was greatly appreciated, so congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to our Herne Drama Club for the four performances. I went to the Saturday performance, and they just continue to amaze me in what they're able to do. It's just, it's a treat to go into watch, and the amount of work that goes in by many, from even parents and the students themselves, obviously, and it's just, it was a great performance. So a lot of fun. And then we also had the Athletics Hall of Fame on Saturday night, which was a tremendous showing to support some really quite extraordinary athletic accomplishments from those that were inducted into the Hall of Fame. And listening to all of them that spoke, it really, it spoke so much of the teamwork and how many people were a part of their success. So that was a great evening, and the high school did a great job of that, too. So congratulations to all of them. We have a sixth grade concert taking place tonight with our band chorus and orchestra. We'll have our fifth graders next week, so we could be, we could go to that one on, next, the 17th. And then also, we have the winter concert that's actually on the 12th, that's coming up this week on Thursday night at the high school. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, we've heard about our Project 351 in the past, our ambassadors. And so Arshia Wal is our Project 351 ambassador this year, and she is working with the schools as far as her leadership program, because they come up with statewide leadership programs, is to, they have to find a, kind of a district-wide, community-wide service project. And so she's looking at food insecurities and having donations made to help replenish the Foxborough food pantry. So just wanted to do a little shout out to Arshia and the leadership that she's doing. She's quite an impressive kiddo herself. And then the, the last one really is that our winter break is upon us. It seems quick, with Thanksgiving being so late. And that'll start on Monday, December 23rd, with students returning on the Thursday after the new year on January 2nd.
Time's flying.
It sure is.
Thank you so much. All right, so we're going to move on, with your permission, we're going to move on to the school committee student representative reports. Yasmin and Stevie.
All right, we don't have much this time, but there is nine days left until our next break. I finally have that. It's, well, nine days, including today, eight days coming up. And then we, as was mentioned, there's the food donations going on. There's, there's multiple boxes in the high school. They're, they've been filling up, have been seeing everyone participate in putting stuff in there. It's been really nice seeing that. It's overall, it's just been good stuff happening.
As you said before, that the Super Bowl did happen this Friday. The students were able to go for free, thanks to the Kraft Group. It was a very fun experience, even though we lost, it was still fun. Also, winter sports has started, and everyone's getting back into the routine of school and sports.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, guys. All right, so we're going to move on to the preliminary discussion of the proposed FY26 budget. That's going to be Dr. Berdus and Karen Sheridan.
All right, so as you are well aware, this is just the first preliminary budget discussion and presentation that takes place. We still have more that will take place in January, and our budget subcommittee is met as well. So just to kind of go over the, the timeline here as a, as a reminder, we started out with a pre-budget planning meeting as, back in October with the town side. We had the joint meeting with a financial summit that took place last month, and then had another meeting with the town leadership to continue budget planning based on some of the things that you'll hear about this evening, our budget subcommittee with Rob and Michelle. We had about three hours with that group, and we're going to be needing more time as well, that we had talked about, and that, that obviously tonight is our first public presentation of the preliminary budget. The rest of the timeline is very much as it has been in the past. Once we know who our advisory liaisons from AdCom are, we'll be meeting with them. Our January 6th meeting, our January 14th meeting, I should say, will be the next meeting here. And then by policy, you vote and take that action step at the last meeting in January, which will be January 28th. We will then be meeting with AdCom, as well as going forward to town meeting, once we go through many other meetings. And I, I think it's important to remind folks of this timeline, because it, there's a lot of work that takes place, and there's a lot of layers that take place between now and before we ever get even to your vote of the budget at the end of January, and then we get to town meeting in May. So this evening, we're going to be framing the process and the direction from that financial summit and our meetings, and really, a state of the state in where we are at this point in time. So when we think about the budget process itself, one of the pieces that, that is new is with having Karen as a new business manager here. We've always been very fiscally responsible, we've always been very transparent. The, the number of data points that we have, it's been complimented by the town side over and over about the amount of information that we're able to prepare, and the level of detail down to every single line that we go through in order to build this budget. And that's continued. And so when we continue forward, and you do have somebody that's new in the role, just typically being new, you ask a lot of questions. And that's a really good process as part of that, too, particularly when you think about the analysis of the budget. Anytime someone's asking thought-provoking questions, it helps you really reflect on things, the way we've done things, the way we're going forward, and if you're thinking about them in any different ways. So it's always a great process as far as that analysis. But we've continued as we always have in the past. We look at our trends, we look at patterns and classes, we look at data, we look at our program needs, and we build that budget based on our building and district-level leadership. And it is a needs-based budget. The collaboration piece is key here as well, as mentioning on that slide before, on the timeline, the number of planning sessions that take place at the town side, but then on the planning sessions that we have, from central office to district leadership to town leadership. Karen, myself, Dr. Burrows, and then Mr. Michael Azak, we met with every single department, every building leader, to really get an idea of what is really working within every, down to every single line was scrutinized, as well as what are the needs going forward and projecting those needs. And you'll see that this evening, although understanding that we're really unable to put a lot of those, those needs based on where we're landing with the budget itself. So after meeting with town leadership and with all of the different departments, meeting with our budget subcommittee, as I said, with Rob and Michelle, really getting down, again, down into those lines, and then looking to where our challenges are, and focusing on potential solutions, even with the town side, with some of our challenges that you'll hear, particularly with special education, out-of-district cost. It's, it's not something that we haven't experienced in years past, as you'll see when we look at some of the trends. But a lot of work's been done in that area to build programs, but we're still seeing, based on some out-of-district costs and some significant needs, some increases there. The strategy here is really, again, looking at those lines. One of the things that Karen has done is taken every line and then moved it to go to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and their coding system. So you'll see within lines to line, some of things that have shifted around. That's intentional, it'll make the end-of-year reporting easier in the end. But particularly when you're new to a budget, it's nice to be able, she spent hours and hours and hours on this, but it really helps to really understand every single line, and then it'll pay off in dividends at the end of the year with those, those new codes. And then looking to any of the areas where we can help take the pressure off a little bit off the general budget, looking at revolving accounts of things that would be appropriate, looking at where maybe some of those offsets can go that makes sense. And we'll talk about that this evening. And then always, and most importantly, it's based on our goals. The academic programs that we offer here and the, the excellence that we have, it's based on the professional, our staff, our teachers, our educational assistants, it is our building-level leadership, it's, it's everyone. And that is all based on our plan for success and the academic goals and for the whole child as we move forward, and this budget reflects those needs. So when we talk about that message, it has not, it's not changed. It continues to propose the high level of educational services for our students, those that the town value, and what we provide for students. It does adjust for shifting populations. Some of those are, are not honestly within our control. It's adjusting for those. But the philosophy continues to be consistent with the historical approach, and that is providing a strong commitment to education, and it's one that this town values of all that we provide, and all of those that work so hard to provide in making decisions that are in the best interest of students, and all of our decisions are based that way. It does maintain reasonable class sizes going forward. It does preserve our current programs that we have and that we value so much in the services to students. And then again, it is moving towards our own academic and strategic initiatives in our plan for success. And then also, as I will mention in a moment, really kind of going back to what we've done, even through the Nias visit with our vision of a graduate, and it's a pre-K to 12 vision. It's not just high school. But you'll see, as it should be, the largest part, as with most districts, or all districts, actually, it's based on instructional services to students. It is based on student needs. It does continue to address special education costs and the significant increases that we're seeing in out-of-district cost, and some of those, as I just stated, are completely out of our control. We do still have our newcomers as part of the emergency shelter. The contract with the emergency shelter at this point in time has been extended through December of 2025, so we do still have our students. We're, we're seeing shifts in that population of students, and that reflects in our budget as we move forward as well. And the funding that is coming from the state, we're seeing anything that we have that we've been able to continue to roll forward. We, we don't know after the funding that happens in January with the, the next payment, what that will look like. So we're having to be really cognizant of that. But again, we also are seeing shifts in the population of our students in the emergency shelter. And then as we move forward, it is, it really is focusing on that plan for success and our vision of a graduate. This plan will sunset in June. We are actively preparing already to develop the next plan for success, but I don't see it changing a lot when we think about what our priorities are. They're going to continue to be providing a safe and supportive environment. They're going to continue to be providing opportunities for our educators to collaborate and provide an educational, excellent education for our students. Well-being, as continues to be the whole child, it's not just about academics, it is really supporting the social, emotional well-being of all of our students. And then again, that strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough and doing what we do best, which is providing an excellent education for students. I will hand it off to Karen a little bit as we start to frame what this preliminary budget at 44,480,934, and what that, what did I say?
Thousand.
Forty, forty-four million.
Million.
Thousand.
We'd be in trouble.
We would be in trouble, sorry. Forty-four million, 480,934. But again, you're going to see, it kind of boils down to about three areas as we move forward.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I've been deep in budget, looking through your expenditures, three years of history, looking at trends, looking at averages, and to come to this budget that we're presenting here today as a preliminary. So the thing that I think is, is important to start is to give everybody an idea of the difference between a level service budget versus a level funding budget. It's important to know that difference because the town has directed the departments to stay at a level service budget. So with a level service budget, it keeps the same level of teaching and learning services for students. It absorbs fixed cost increases while maintaining existing student experiences and resources. It allows for financial budget increases from previous year to maintain all programs. And transportation and special education out-of-district tuition increases would be part of level service budgeting. So those are important to note as we go forward with the story of the budget that you have here for FY26. A level-funded budget is much different. A level funding budget remains the same dollar amount as a. A level funding budget remains the same dollar amount as a previous year's budget. The reasons level funding never really equate to level service is because you have contractual obligations, you have unions, you have employees, you have transportation, you have mandated special education needs, you have surging costs in utilities, contracts, supplies, software, out of district tuition increases. And as in our own lives, we see inflation for our different expenditures. So a level funding budget is very difficult to, to do. A level service budget oftentimes is not the same percentage as it was the year before. So as we go through the story, you'll see. So we move on to the next one. So for the, on this slide, we have a little bit of segments here. So on the top segment, so this is the FY '25 budget versus FY '26 budget with the increase of $1,262,782. So that's the 3% increase, which is the, the current goal that the town would like to keep us at, okay, is at 3%. 3% is at $1,262,782. So when I go to the next budget, which is the one that is the preliminary budget that we're bringing forward tonight, it's $44,489,34, which is an increase of $2,388,192, which is a much larger increase of 5.67%, okay? So how do we get to 5.67% with this level service budget? So if you look at the next section is where we're kind of building up to that 5.67%. So for this year, you have a transportation increase of $310,969, and that is 0.74% of this increase. The transportation has some increase in salary due to your new union contract. In looking at your expenditures, there were some increases in some contracted services, some repairs and maintenance need, lines needed to be increased a little with the fleet that you have and the runs that you have. You had the, you also had some out of district transportation increases. And despite moving some money to the outside resources, so we moved, we increased some of the money from the budget to the outside resources. One of them in particular in this area was we went from forty, from $30,000 to $40,000 for the fuel. So we moved some of that to the off-duty transportation revolving fund into the Metco grant. So we are looking at the different revolving funds and if there's ways that we can move some of the money into those revolving funds or grants to help offset this high increase, okay? So the next one is a special education out of district tuition increase, and this is the largest hit. So you can see that that is 914,946, which is 2.17% of an increase. So the out of district, special ed, out of district students has increased with this preliminary budget of nine students with two residential placements, which if you know anything about special ed out of district students, which placements, which I have had for many years in my career, residential placements can be very costly, although certain students, that's their need. So that's where I say, well, level service includes level service for out of district students. So if you take the transportation and the out of district together, the increase, the budget is $1,225,915, which is 9.1%. So at that point, we were already almost at the full amount that the town is recommending us to be at, okay? So that's a difficult place to be in, especially when it's your first year as director, I mean, as a finance person here in this town. But this is the needs of the, of the school district right now. So again, this eats up most of that. The budget increases at this 3.99%, all right, which includes, oh, sorry. The other, all other increases are 454, 462, which is 1.08%. And that brings me to a 3.99%, but that does not include the steps and lanes and the, that, I'm sorry, that includes the steps and lanes, but it does not include the COLAs for anybody. It does not include for any of the contractual services, contractual obligations, all right? So here we are at 3.99%. When we add in FY '26 contractual obligations and COLA for unsettled contracts, and just to remind you, we have five contracts that we're working on this year, okay? That brings us up to 5.67%. So when you're at 5.67% and your town wants to come at 3%, you have to get a little creative in your budgeting. So I will go to slide nine. With slide nine, I'm sorry, slide nine is showing you those budget drivers. So you've got your transportation, your ongoing contractual obligations, your special education, out of district tuition, and then all other increases. So you can see that it's really, this is really the meat of driving your budget. There's only a few parts this year that are just moving you up to this high increase. And that, that transportation, the out of district is just out of our control. There's nothing that we can do about those. They're mandated and there's, we can't cut the out of district tuition. That's a mandated expense. So it's very difficult when you're at this position, so you start to get a little creative. And now we're going to get into this budget. Before we get into that, we're going to go into, this is your preliminary budget by your cost center. So this is how you historically present your budget, is by your different cost centers. And here you can see the percentages by each cost center. So you've got Borough, Igo, Tail, Ahern, you go to Special Ed. And I'm not getting, getting into each area, but you can see how you come up with that The next slide, you'll see in a pie chart how that shows. So you'll see in your instructional area, if you do by the cost centers is 54.93% with your, let's see, athletics at 1.73%. So that's kind of how the pie is when you come with your cost center, all right? And when we get to slide 12, so this is a little different than what this district is used to. So here, I wanted to show you your budget, the way that the Department of Ed would look at your budget with different function codes, okay? So this is how I, we would report for the end of year report. This is how you would look when you're looking at the per pupil expenditure and how they do your chapter 78 and all that. So this is some different parts on how you would look at your budget. So in this area, you'll see, it's kind of, has the red in there. So in the 2,000 function code area, you have your instructional services, okay? So that's the piece of the pie that should be the highest percentage of your budget because our goal is to educate children. And so the instructional services area is where you want your highest percentage to be. And with this budget, it's 72.17%, all right? You go down to number two, and that is operations and maintenance of plant, and that is at 9.84%. Now that doesn't, that includes not only your custodial services, but includes your heat and your utilities, includes your grounds and building and equipment, but it also includes your technology and infrastructure. So that is done in the 4,000s area when you go by Department of Education. Number three, if you go at the three, it's 8.24% for other school services. Again, instructional services for students. So in that area, you've got your nurses here, you've got your transportation, you've got food service if you have like, not the food service in the revolving fund, but say you have some lunch monitors or something like that, that would be in that area. You have your athletics, you have student activity, and if you had some school security, that would be in there, okay? So you might want to note, and if you look at the district administration and leadership, okay? So district administration and leadership is 3.44% of the pie. So it's not a huge piece of the pie. This budget is definitely instructional heavy, and that's what it's supposed to be because that's what we're all here for, is to teach children, all right? When you go to the next slide, you can see that pie. So you see the big red is instructional services. You see that, that green larger piece of that pie is the other school services where you have the athletics and stuff. So this is how the Department of Ed would see your budget, okay? When you go to the next slide, slide 14, so here we're going to get into a little bit of analysis of your budget and why this is such a difficult year for this budget to stay at 3%, okay? So when you look at your budget by payroll versus expenditures, salaries are the largest percentage of this budget. It's 83.15%. That's heavy. So when your salaries are that large a piece of your budget, it's hard to stay at some low percentages and increases. So expenditures are at 16.85%, payroll is at 83.15%. The budget challenge this year, so we were at 3.99% increase just for level service staffing without any COLA for unsettled contracts. So that's, that's a challenge. That's a budget challenge, all right? And the unions that we have negotiation with are teachers, ed assistants, secretaries, and then in the revolving funds, we have food service and extended day. At the top, you'll see the major category by total expenditures, and your general education is 73.3% of this budget, which special education being 26.7. And that would include the out of district, which is probably bumping it up a little because of your high increase in your out of district this year, all right? So just keep that in mind when you look as we go forward. So slide 15, so with this large budget increase, we met with the town manager and we met with the finance director at the town to discuss some options and have some collaboration because we knew right off that this was a high increase, that what we were seeing. So this is a budget option that we discussed with them. We feel it's a good option to explore, and I'll give you a little bit of a scenario on how this works. So at the top, you've got your budget increase of 5.67%, all right? So what we did was we pulled out the additional special education out of district tuition increase. And what we're proposing is that is going to be moved to a separate line item, which be a new special education stabilization fund, which we'll go, get into the logistics of that after this slide. So that would be on a separate budget, and that is 2.17%. The remainder of the budget would be the town appropriation, and that would be at 3.5%, okay? So that would bring you up to that 5.67%. So the new special education stabilization fund, that would need to be approved at town meeting, so town meeting has to approve it. And then the recommendation would be, that free cash would be the initial one-time startup cost, all right? So that would be that 914,946. So the way that would work is that when you, that would only be used for the special education cost. If you don't need it, it would stay in that special education reserve because we all know that special education costs can be very, very volatile. They can change with the wind. So that's a good thing because then you have that money in a separate pot, and if you don't need it, then you can go to it when you need it. So how does the special education stabilization fund work? So this slide, at the top, for anybody who really wants to read about the stabilization fund, that's the link to where it is on the Department of Education. But this is a little bit of the gist of how a special education stabilization fund works. So the law allows you to have special education stabilization fund, and it enables municipal districts to establish a reserve fund that can be used for future years for unanticipated, unbudgeted costs for special education, out of district tuition, transportation, and recovery high school tuition. And establishing the budget, the fund requires a majority vote of the school committee and local legislation. So what would happen would, the school committee would have to vote that yes, they want to put a warrant article forward to set up a special education reserve fund. That would go to town meeting, and the town meeting would have to approve it, all right? So after that, special education stabilization fund is set up, all right, then in the future, this fund cannot exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the district. And for Foxborough, this is estimated using FY '24 net school spending at $1,789,999. So it's not like a huge amount of money that they allow you to put in for the special education reserve fund. It's really supposed to be for those really unexpected costs. All of a sudden, you get a couple of move-ins that are, is it a residential move-in or something like that? So you have some area to get to, to get that money from rather than really hitting your budget. So once that is established, you get that one-time money into the fund, then going forward, the school committee is the board that would vote to appropriate any monies into this fund, okay? So for example, maybe at the end of a year, you have some money left over from your budget. In the past, you have sent it to the town. So you would have the option that maybe I want to send a couple of hundred thousand this year to special education reserve fund. The school committee would have to vote that. So they would vote that that's going to go there. However, in order to use that money in the special education reserve fund, then the school committee would have to vote that they want to use some of that money, and then the selectmen would have to vote to use some of that money. My history, I've worked with special education stabilization funds, they're mandated cost. I have never had an issue with going to, you know, the town to be able to use that money. It's just that that's the way that the law requires you to do it, that you have to go through school committee first, then the town, and then you're able to do it for that region and out. There are some towns that have been a little creative in this, and what they're doing is they're allowing some of their Medicaid funds to be transferred to this fund by a town meeting vote each year. So those who are unaware of the Medicaid funds, the Medicaid funds are funds that they go to the town and, but the school is the one who initiates this. They have some things that they need to do, mostly in the special education area, in order to get this Medicaid fund. The town is, is fully in the rights to have that money, but they also are fully in their rights to be able to transfer that money if they want to, to the schools. And this would be in what they would do at town meeting. They may have a warrant article there that each year, and it doesn't have to be each year, maybe some years you do it and some years you don't. That would be a warrant article that we would like some of that Medicaid fund money this year to go help replenish the special education reserve fund. So those are just some ideas of how you could do it in the future because you're going to get that, if, if this plan goes forward, you get that initial, but then you have to start to plan going forward on how you want to replenish that fund. So if, if anybody has any other questions on that, but otherwise, I'll, I'll keep going and you certainly can ask me at the end if you have more questions on that special education stabilization fund.
I do.
Okay?
Might as well. Is that okay? Yeah, okay. With Medicaid funds, sorry, I'm not talking to the mic. With the Medicaid funds is, I don't have a sense of scale. Does anybody like, or do you, in terms of how much money that is on an annual basis roughly that the town is utilizing?
I think it's approximately about $200,000 for, for Foxborough right now. But honestly, one of the things that I would like to do is send some people to some training for Medicaid and see if maybe we can up that. So, because I do have some new staff members and we are trying to reorganize in, in the finance department, and that is one of the goals I'd like to do, is get somebody trained in Medicaid so that we can make sure that we get the full amount of revenue that we can from the Medicaid. Whether that will increase, I don't know. It would depend on, as we look at it. So I think it's about 175, as I recall.
And then given that that would be a, a town meeting decision, is that then initially a collaboration with the Board of Selectmen as well? Because it necessitates us planning to vote that out, right?
Yeah, I think with the plans like this, especially with the special education stabilization fund, using the Medicaid, it's definitely a collaboration with town and school.
Which is, we do that all the time.
Right. And I mean, one of the reasons I came here was because of that. So, you know, it's definitely something that, I mean, some, some districts are in favor of this. I've had great success with this in some other districts. I know Wellesley is one of the districts that does that Medicaid shift, all right? And, I mean, I've seen success with it in my past.
And then, and forgive me if I could, this will sound like, more like a statement than a question. I'm just trying to put it in the context that I may have understood or looked at aspects of the budget in years past. So just to be clear, this is different than the circuit breaker and any aid that the state gives to assist with special ed costs. The stabilization fund, is it true that the stabilization fund is really just to protect us in these years where we have huge bumps and huge increases and, you know, we're stuck with the bill like right now?
Yes, it is. It's definitely for those unanticipated unbudgeted costs.
Smoothing it out. Okay.
For those bumps. And I mean, they come to districts at different times. I mean, you might have a couple of years where it's smooth sailing and then you have another year where you get a bump, and it could be in other areas other than special education, but when it comes in a special education area, there's not too much you can do about it because they're mandated costs. So you have to find the money. So this is just one other. So this is just one other avenue to be able to help fund those budgets when you have years like that.
Yep.
And the projected, when we look at our out-of-district numbers, the projected number right now is, is seven, and out of those seven, four are move-ins. So that's when we're talking about their, their costs that, it comes in with that price tag, if you will.
Yeah. Public education. So, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. So before we get into some other scenarios with budget, I'm going to send it to Amy to go over some of the staff changes.
So when we look at overall, the ebbs and flows of what happened with enrollment or changes over time, we're actually down two point seven five positions overall. This, again, when we look at this point in time of year, we're projecting based on enrollments and what we're seeing in that analysis that I talked about at the very beginning of trends and patterns. So based on enrollment, it looks as though at this point, we would be down a teacher at the IGO, two at the Taylor, and so that's where you see those reductions there. And again, that's based on enrollment, and as I had said at the beginning of this, is that our budget is based on continuing with what we value, which is having really good class sizes. The PAVE teacher for special education at the high school, we've talked for the last number of years here on building these programs within, so that we don't have students going out of district, and particularly if we have students that move in and have an IEP where they're already out of district, we work really hard. Special education department does a really, a nice job with working to get students back in. We want students in district if it's the most appropriate placement for them. So this special education teacher addition would be to be able to continue to retain our rising ninth graders going into the high school for a program to be able to meet their needs. So that's why you do see that one as an addition. If you think back to the curriculum review, for the science curriculum review, we had over a year ago now, to move towards repurposing into a STEM teacher to really focus on grades three and four. So that is just a shift in repurposing a position that we currently have. The accounting assistant of a point two-five is to increase based on volume and the adjustments and what's taking place in the business office. And then, as you know, we have three teachers that we added based on the migrant crisis with newcomers, and looking at the enrollment of those students, and projecting that, based on the enrollment, and then based on funding and what we have from the state, that it would be two, not three, next year. So that's the staffing adjustments, based on looking at what the needs are. When you look at this next slide, as I had mentioned in the beginning, working with every building and district leader and identifying what are the needs, these are the needs, but we're unable to put them in that budget. Well, we're saying even without anything, just moving forward, we're already at three point nine nine percent.
Right.
But these, these are the needs. And so I just wanted to take some time and to talk about what this kind of shakes out as far as the picture here. So the educational assistant here that you see at the IGO, if you think about our elementary programs for special education, we have different programs at different schools. We have our step-in, step-out program at the IGO, and that is to support that program, and we think about the number of students in that program. Between the IGO and the Taylor, having an additional point five counselor at each, again, having those programs, that takes a lot of time from our current, we have a counselor at each of those schools, so the time and effort that is there, being able to meet the needs in the programs, but also be able to meet the needs of all of the students in the school. So that is why you see an increase of a point five at each of those two elementary schools based on needs. At the Ahearn, we have a guidance counselor that's dedicated to grades six, one to grade seven, and one to grade eight, and they share grade five. So that is to be able to have a dedicated counselor at grade five to mirror what we have at grade six, seven, and eight, based on needs. And they work with all, they work with all of our students. So if you think about a building that's getting close to a size, you know, eight hundred students, there's a lot of students and there's a lot of needs, and middle school in particular, middle school. Special education secretaries, when we, we have the support in the special education office, that some of our secretaries are across the district, they're one hundred and eighty-five days as what they are with the school year, some are to twenty, some are year-round. So this is an additional FTE of just moving from one hundred and eighty-five days to two hundred and twenty, based on the volume and the work that's in the special education office, and all of the timelines that we know that have to be met, and there's a lot of regulations that have to be followed. And then facility secretary, when you think about our facilities, we have Tony Masali and Carl Fuller as our manager and assistant manager. So all of the other work, aside from the facilities and the operations, when you think of purchase orders and all of that, some secretarial support is a need that's been identified there. We, we share, we all work together really, really well, but again, this is a matter of identifying by going to every single department, what is the need? But these, again, are ones that we were unable to move forward based on what we have before us and the projection from a budgetary standpoint from the town.
And that brings us to the cost. If you add these new staff members and new staff requests into your budget, so if you had that five point six seven percent, that was before we did the special education out-of-district as a separate budget, if you add those new staff requests into, then you bring in your budget up to six point five one percent. And if you go with the model where you separate out the out-of-district tuition into the special education reserve fund, this would bring your town appropriation at four point three three percent, all right? So that's the options for if you were going to bring those new staff requests in. On slide twenty here, the outside resources, so we increased, that's an increase of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four. So with the revolving funds, the revolving funds increase of ninety-seven thousand two dollars, we increased in the following areas. So I increased the athletic revolving coaching stipends, I moved that up a little. And we did, I mean, I'd looked a lot at your revolving funds, what the balances were, what your history was, to make sure that I felt that was reasonableness to move them to, and that those funds could sustain it. So we didn't just move them over to move over, we just, we had to make sure that they could sustain it. So the athletic revolving, again, coaching stipends. The preschool tuition, we moved, you used to just pay for a point five oh of your preschool coordinator, so it was half in the revolving fund, half in your appropriation general fund. So we moved the full, the full preschool coordinator to the revolving fund. We also were creative in, there was a point two oh nurse that was needed, so in, in order to fund that, we put point two of the nurse at the borough who handles some preschool, and we put point two of her salary into the preschool revolving to be able to get that point two nurse addition that was needed, that they have now, but it's in grant funding, and that grant funding will not be able to fund it for FY twenty-six. Extended day, we increased the electricity a little bit, but we also increased it with a portion, a small portion of the custodian, because reasonable, reasonableness there is the custodian does clean up after the extended day. So we moved a little bit of that into that area. And then off-duty transportation, we increased that a little, and that was for the fuel for the transportation, all right? The grant is going down two hundred and sixty-four, four ninety-seven, and that's mostly due to the anticipation, the anticipated loss of the emergency shelter newcomers grant, all right? So the only money that we will have for FY twenty-six is the carryover, and we have no indication that we're going to be getting any more money in that grant, so that's why you're seeing that decrease in that grant right there. The circuit breaker is another area that we increased. So I kept the same level of the offset for the out-of-district tuition as you've had with your history, which is, so the previous year revenue that you receive in. So it did go up a little bit. So FY twenty-five revenue is the offset for FY twenty-six, which is a history and is great budgeting sense to do that. But on top of that, I increased some, I put some circuit breaker offset into the transportation, given the fact that your transportation has had a large increase, and that circuit breaker now allows for transportation. So we increased the transportation into the circuit breaker by one hundred and twenty-one, one ninety-seven. So we're trying to utilize those revolving funds and find other ways to fund the budget, and these are some of the ways that we did that with some of the offsets. On twenty, slide twenty-one, this is your town appropriated budget history percentage increases. So some years, and we have them circled in red, you had some increases that were over three percent with, for me, since I'm new, I'm thinking that there must have been years when you had higher needs, all right? So in FY seventeen, you had a three point nine percent increase, and in FY eighteen, you had a three point four oh percent increase. FY twenty-one, you had a three point eight two percent increase. And as Superintendent and I started looking at your history to see why those increases were kind of higher in those years, and it showed a lot of what we're seeing this year, which was out-of-district was a little bit higher, although there was, there was one year which Superintendent can speak more to it, but you studied your therapeutic programs. That was in FY twenty-one. So in FY twenty-one, you started to do some more therapeutic programs, and then you see your increase for twenty-two wasn't quite as large, because you had your therapeutic programs, which is great. So kudos to Cory and the district. But, so now you're at a stand right now where you have that two, you have two residential students that are pretty hefty in that, which is causing you that increase, you've got some other move-ins, you've got your transportation increasing, and I know that the district is always looking at more in-house placement classrooms, but for right now, the needs for the FY twenty-six budget are higher than the three percent, if you want to go with the level service, all right? Do you have anything more you want to say to that?
No, I think that's, it makes sense when we think about the programs, the special education teachers that were added here to budgets in the past. During that time, we also had the move from tuition-based kindergarten, we had that four-year plan to be able to eliminate fees for kindergarten, but when I looked back to the specific numbers for the out-of-district placements, it mirrors so much. And I, and I can remember, I was here the one summer, that we had five move-ins. So you go through these different time periods and you see that, but then at the same time, I think it really tells the story of the work that's been done with creating these in-district programs to bring students back. But sometimes you're going to have a year like what we have right now, it's just completely out of your control. What we see from now to what we see towards January to the end of the year, again, this is our point in time and projections, you know, maybe we won't see that come to fruition, but we need to bring to you what we anticipate that it could be, and based on the real impact that it's going to have budgetarily.
And then, like Amy said, for me, when I do budgeting, I always take it as this is a picture in time, because what you want to build is a budget that you feel at this moment in time, what is the best budget that will meet the needs of the districts and the students? And that's where we are. So on this slide, I wanted to give you an idea of your per pupil expenditure. So Foxborough definitely supports their school districts, but what I wanted to show on this chart is, although they do support their district, and it's, it's very clear from everything I've heard and everything I see, you can see that the gap between the state average and, and Foxborough is getting close, all right? So you see in FY nineteen, Foxborough was above the state average in the per pupil expenditure. They were above in twenty, they were above in twenty-one, they were a little above in twenty-two, and now when you get to twenty-three, and the data is not there yet for twenty-four and twenty-five, but when you get to twenty-three, you're almost at the state average. And even when I list, look at the listing of the towns, there's the line where the state average is, and you're only four, four towns above that, okay? So just, it's important to know, to review this, because then you see how you are relative to other towns, and that's why I think it's important to look at that. And it's not at all to say that Foxborough doesn't support its districts, the district, because it does, and I see that and I hear that and I know that. But I do think that trends in per pupil expenditure and in your net school spending and things are still important to look at, just to see how you are with regard to other districts in the state, and especially in your surrounding towns. So that's why we put this slide up there. This slide is going to be out-of-district enrollment, so.
So when you look at our enrollment over the years, I mean, we have ebbs and flows, and particularly when we see adjustments at the elementary schools, because we always say, you know, the beautiful thing about having neighborhood schools is having neighborhood schools. And the challenge is, you start to see those fluctuations in enrollment, and teachers are having to move from grade levels, and sometimes they move from one school to the other based on what it looks like across the landscape of the town at the elementary level. But overall, we're very consistent in our enrollment, even though we have those ebbs and flows. But at the same time, we look at them every year by school, by grade level, to see what the enrollment looks like. Again, to, to maintain really good, reasonable class sizes, but if we have adjustments, then we're making those adjustments. We're looking at it very carefully. The big question mark every year is kindergarten, and knowing what that's going to look like, the efforts that go into getting the word out to have parents to register their child starting in January, because that'll start next month, there's a lot of effort there, because it's always, what is kindergarten going to look like? That's, that's the big question mark. But my point is, our enrollment has continued to be steady, even though we may see from one grade level to the other, or from, you know, elementary, middle, and high, some shifts that are there. But lastly, when you look at those out-of-district, is what we've talked about before, you, you can see in those numbers that we had the higher percentages, back to FY twenty-one, you can see the higher number of out-of-district students. That impacts your budget in a different way. But again, all of the work that's being done every year in looking at being able to keep our students in district, that's our goal. It's more cost-effective, but more importantly, it's what's best for students if we're able to program appropriately for them. So that's just a snapshot of what it's looked like over time. As far as next steps here, we will continue to review, as we said, this is the preliminary discussion. It is going to go back to the subcommittee to be able, what the discussion is here this evening, questions that you have, other things that you might want us to look at, continuing to monitor any other revenue changes, having the second and third meeting in January at school committee, school committee meetings, AdCom with Finance Committee as well, and then, you know, with the end of the journey being town meeting in May, but there's a lot of stops along the way before we ever get there.
Thank you all for that. I do know that there's a lot of hours that you've spent learning the district, and this presentation was very thorough.
Learned.
Thank you. No, you can, it's evident that you've gotten a note and said, no. Anyone have any questions or comments? I'd be shocked if you didn't.
Sorry. I don't need to go first, though.
No, go ahead.
I appreciate and I'm thankful for the idea of the tuition, out-of-district placement tuition stabilization fund. It makes sense to me. In the talks, you might have had, to the extent you've had time to have them, with the town and other departments that, you know, aren't us, does that seem like a reasonable ask? I'm trying to think through my limited knowledge of the other departments, and I, I can't immediately think of a corollary to what our, our department, the, the schools go through with these wildly fluctuating costs that are mandated by law from year to year. And, I mean, if anybody else can think of any, please tell me, but that's why I'm, I'm just trying to, because it would be disappointing, to say the least, to plan on having this and, and, you know, as, as a method to stabilize our own budget and stay closer to what the town is asking, making sure that we absolutely would need this budget to pass town meeting. to pass town meeting. And it's going to go through AdCom as well for their advice. But does it seem that people you've talked to think that this is a reasonable thing as well?
I mean, when we met with the Director of Finance and the town manager, we got very favorable from them. I mean, I got a really nice email from the Director of Finance regarding it. It sounded to me like they were going to support it.
Okay.
So that's why we met with them.
It seems like it'll be supported.
From those two.
Well, that's good.
When we had the meeting, it sounded like they were in support of it. Did you feel that way?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I think they might have started a reserve fund in another department years ago, but that's from tracking, might know this. But I think there was another department that they started a reserve fund.
Fire.
I was going to say, I think it's fire, but I don't want to speak if it was wrong. So, I mean, it's not unusual. It, I mean, it's a different approach. But I'll tell you the reason why I like it, because I always feel like, even though I work as a finance for the school, I do always feel like it is a town and that we work together collaboratively.
Right.
So you go forward with a 5.6% or whatever increase in that without moving this out, then each year that town is having an increase on top of that 5.6. And sometimes that becomes unsustainable in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I like this approach better, because then your town appropriated budget of the 3.5, so next year when you go for your budget, you're not getting, you're going to get your increase on top of that. And I've seen that where, you know, you keep with that high percentage year, and it becomes difficult for a town. And I feel like it's, you have to work together for the budget.
Right.
And that's why I felt this was the best approach, given the year that you have right here. And in hopes that, you know, you have more programs that you start and that, or there's some changes and that. But my opinion is, I feel like that's the best approach for this year. And I did feel like it was favorable by at least the two that we spoke to, but I can't say about anybody else. I haven't really talked to anybody else for that.
And the understanding, the reason I'm asking is, I fully support this idea, not just because of the bottom line, but it seems like a logical thing to do for something that's out of our control, incredibly volatile. Yes, you want to save for it and have a mechanized legal way of doing that that doesn't look like a gimmick and it's very transparent. I just, having been to a number of town meetings, I want to make sure that it sounds reasonable and it's, that other, you know, folks in the town are supporting it, because we want it to make sure that it passes.
The issue at hand this year is that if you, if they, if you're required to stay at that low percentage, then the majority of this budget is, you don't have, that's not a lot of places to pull from. So if they don't do that, you're looking at really dig and dig, dig and deep. And that's not just expenditures, that's people. So, I mean, that's a big percentage increase to have to dig into. So, I mean, that's the choices, and sometimes you have real tough choices some years in budgets. And that's the choice this year, which is why I really am in favor of pulling out the special education.
Why, thank you for that. And then, sorry, did anybody else have anything on that?
You go ahead, I'll.
I had one other. It's fine. One other question, maybe it's just a request, is I know that you all are meeting again with the subcommittee, and I know you're always meeting with your building leaders, and hearing the staffing requests and that they're not met. And I was wondering, interested in looking at, are there bigger costs down the road for saying no to any of those staffing line items? That, you know, and it's just, you don't need to answer it now, but it's just something to think through from a budgetary standpoint. You don't want to save on something now and it costs us more later. That's all. And it's just an open question we can get into in a future meeting. That's all I got.
Yeah, so just a couple of things as a reminder. When we talk about being creative with finances, I get a little, I don't like the word creative with finances. I'd rather, so what we're talking about, or everything we're talking about are accepted standard practices, and we are recodifying where we take the money from. So everything is, and the practices that we're following are followed by many other districts in the Commonwealth. So I just want everybody to understand that we're not doing anything necessarily new, we're doing it differently than how we've done it in the past, but it is a common accepted practice. The second thing I think we all need to remember, and just a reminder to anybody that's listening and doesn't know this, the costs that we're talking about with out-of-district tuitions or out-of-district costs are not negotiated by the town. They are set by the providers to the state, and so we are mandated to pay the cost that is negotiated by the state with those providers. So those are things that are completely outside of our control, our responsibility and our desires to provide the services to all of our students in this community in the way that they need them in order for them to find the most success possible. So those are just the two reminders. And the last piece is, just to pick up on what Brent said about the additional staff requests that we were not able to accommodate this year, all of those staff requests are from the point they are budgeted going forward. They are not temporary, based on what we anticipate. They are not necessarily enrollment-based. They are functional-based. And so we should at some point plan for accommodating those in our budget, and they will be a need going forward. So they're not like one-time, like we had with the newcomers and some of the L teachers. And we knew that was going, that the need was going to decrease over time. The need for these positions is not planned to decrease, at least in the short term. So just, those are just reminders for everybody in the committee.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add, ask? Anything? Thank you so much to the subcommittee for all of your.
Thank you for the work.
Work and diligence. I know your heavy lift is just beginning, so thank you very much. Anything further? Anyone?
No, that just, we'll be reaching back out for a date with the subcommittee to be able to come back together based on questions that you have after tonight's conversation.
Is Dr. Barrows, is the, is the goal to have that before the 14th or the 20?
Yes.
All right, just checking. Thanks.
Great. We're going to move right along. We have three donations here from the Iorio Charitable Foundation, the Foxborough Cross-Country Track and Field Club, and the Class of 1974. Does anyone have any questions, or did you want to, Karen, did you want to?
I just have the, so the Iorio Charitable Foundation, $7,000 for general support for the Foxborough High School. That's the first one.
Amazing.
Do you want to read the three and then vote on out three? So do we do separately?
Why don't we do it separately?
Okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I make a motion to accept with gratitude this very generous donation of $7,000 from the Iorio Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? No, all in favor of accepting the donation? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Onto the next one, Karen?
The second one is Foxborough Cross-Country Track and Field Club, a donation of $2,000 to be used for coaching for the track.
Karen? Anyone have a motion to accept this?
I move to accept the $2,000 donation for Foxborough Cross-Country Track and Field Club for coaching with much gratitude.
I second.
Any further discussion? Favor accepting this donation? And that would be 5-0-0 as well. Thank you very much. And on to the third one.
And then the last one is a donation from the Class of '74 for $250, and that is to be used for any use at the high school.
Fantastic. Anyone have a motion for me on that one?
I make a motion to accept with gratitude the $250 from the Class of '74 for use, any use at the high school.
Second.
Any further discussion? No, all in favor? And that would be 5-0-0 as well. Thank you very much to everyone who sent a donation. We really do truly appreciate it. Okay, on to community updates. We're going to start down there.
For that, Maya?
Yes.
Rewards. So just to tell you about the Maya rewards, so my feeling is that if you can do this, it helps with lowering the cost for the district, which as you can see is much needed, and also is valuable PD for the employees and staff. So if anybody can look at those rewards and that professional development that you have, it would be great for the district and the town. So I'd say kudos to anybody who can look into that and start looking at those lists and see if they can get working on those.
So I did actually recently have taken a few different webinars. I believe we have two or three left that we can do before we hit our max. And I will be attending a meeting tomorrow morning here in Town Hall, which will go towards our rewards. So if anyone has any questions on how they can help out from the committee, you can just get in touch with Kathleen Lang. She is a wonderful resource.
She does a great job at it. I did one of the PDs, and she does do a great job.
Yeah.
And as a plug for anyone else, I'll second what Sarah has said. You read the titles of these things and you look at it, and then you go through a few of them, and you get done with it, you're like, yeah, that stuff I'm supposed to know. So, I mean, it's, at least if, you know, for school committee members, it's all, it's all valuable.
Yes, totally agree. Dr. Barrows?
I have no updates.
Could you say, everyone have a wonderful, happy holidays and a happy new year, because it'll be here before you know it.
Like that. Oh, you know what? Stevie, do you have anything to add? Sorry, I didn't mean to skip you.
I have nothing.
No? Okay, thank you.
No, be good to each other. That's it.
No visits, Karen.
No?
Nope.
All right, well, I guess it's going to be off to a happy holiday season for all, wonderful vacation, and anyone have, I guess, see you next year. Anyone have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
I second.
All in favor? Have a great night, everyone.